Good evening. Today is May the 8th at four o'clock and I'd like to call the Forsyth County Work Session to Order. At this time, we'll have the invocation and pledge led by Nancy Roach.
Let us pray. As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of the opportunities to render our services to fellow citizens. We ask that you guide and direct the leaders and our actions. Grant that each of us may feel our responsibility to the school system, to our community, and to our country. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You happy before you run agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Tom and second by Nancy. All in favor? unanimous. We will have presentations and discussions at this time and the first on our agenda are our Spire Presentations by staff members that have taken projects and work with them and we are here to hear the results of those. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Jenny Sparks from Sharon will be our first presentation. And we're glad that you're here, they're always so interesting.
Thank you. My greatest fear was the technology, not the presentation.
No pressure, we're all watching the scene.
Here it goes, we're good.
Yeah, you did it.
Well, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to share some of the focus of our work this year. And the title of the presentation is "Rebranding RTI to MTSS." We made that move as a district moving towards MTSS, but we really embraced it at Sharon and it was definitely a shift for us. So that's where the focus has been. But I first like to define those terms for you. We use lots of acronyms in education, it can get quite confusing. So RTI stands for Response to Interventions and MTSS is a multi-tiered system of supports. They're very similar, you can tell from the slide. They both provide a four-tier pyramid framework of support for learners. They can be used as a support system, they can help to identify gifted learners, special education students, ESAL student support. But primarily, we really, in RTI, focus on those tiers two and three, providing interventions to struggling learners, both academically and behaviorally. But if you look at MTSS, it not only does all of that, but it provides interventions for all learners, tiers one through tier four. We look at struggling learners, on-level learners, high-achieving, and gifted learners. So in sharing this information with our staff, though, we needed to, we knew we needed to tell the why. Why are we moving in this direction? What's the purpose? And by defining a purpose, we really felt we would have greater teacher buy-in to the move. So we're going to look at the data because that supports it. We looked at research that also supported it. We know that if we have higher student achievement, it will impact increased student growth. It also allows us to meet the needs of every single student in our building, whether they're struggling or they're high-achieving. But personally, I feel even more importantly, this is a lot of numbers that we're looking at, I think it goes beyond that. I think by providing those interventions for students at the elementary level, it's going to create just a, it's a critical role it's going to play in reducing those students at risk academically, social, emotionally, behaviorally, in middle school and in high school, if we can do that at the foundational level in elementary school. So we looked at CCRPI. When you look at all the different targets, we know they're moving, they move every year, but that being said, Sharon's done really well with achievement consistently. We've either met our target or in some cases exceeded last year, but it was glaring to us that we weren't hitting our mark in progress. And that's based on student growth. So we really went to the table and kind of had a come to Jesus, if you will, why aren't we doing that? It's not in alignment with our achievement. So we kind of peeled back the layers and what can we do? So we went to the research and we looked at Hattie's research. And I think starting in 2009, his original research looked at 150 influences on achievement. And interestingly enough, number three out of 150 was response to intervention. And we're moving to MTSS, we're doing that, but we're doing it for all students. The effect size was 1.07, that's a great impact. Also at the time, number, I believe it was number eight, was also comprehensive interventions for students with learning disabilities. Well, that also is part of MTSS. So we're really hitting all of our students with that. We believed in it so much, we made it a critical part of our school improvement plan. Aligned with literacy instruction, with seven mindsets for our social-emotional learning, all of that is really embedded within MTSS. So we looked at steps. What were we going to do? How are we going to implement that? It was really important to think about what we'd done in the past and how to move forward. So this is our team that came together, it included our admin team, our literacy coach, our EIP teacher, our ESAL teacher, and even our IE squared paraprofessional. All of these people came together in some way because they provide support to our students. And we brainstormed a variety of models for providing interventions. Historically, our teachers provided their own tier-one, tier-two, really tier-two interventions in their classrooms and we knew it wasn't working. At the end of the day, lots on their plate, something happens or the schedule changes and that's what fell off the table. We knew it wasn't being done with fidelity, intentions, best of intentions, no question, but in order to be successful, they have to be done with fidelity. So at the end of the summer, we came together and we looked at what we were going to do and then we went back to grade levels. And we talked about a common grade level intervention time, rather than a school time. That just didn't work for Sharon, so we asked our grade level chairs to bring it to their teams and create one time, a 30-minute block that they could devote to interventions. So you can see on the right, it's a messy chart, but the work was messy when we were doing it. I think that's the way it's supposed to be. Fourth grade was the only grade we could not do that because they were large, so we had to split them. We wanted them to have common planning time and so we had two teams of intervention teams. You can also see how we started to align in the middle column there, our support staff, our EIP, and then our para and our ESAL. So we created that schedule and then we began to identify students who would receive tier-two and tier-three interventions. We then had to train our teachers on the new criteria for students being eligible for that tier-two and tier-three interventions. And this lists several components of that. They really needed to be, maybe not all of them, but the majority of them, below the 25th percentile on FastBridge, which is what we use to monitor progress, showing struggle in the classroom. We looked at milestone scores in the Level One band, we also looked at those Lexile levels based on milestones, but we also looked at Funtas and Pennell reading level, if it was below the grade level standard. So we took that information and we revisited the MTSS pyramid and it's a four-tier pyramid, all of our students Level One, and they go up as their need rises. So we had those tier-two students who may not have met criteria any longer and we were going to bump them down to tier-one, but we weren't really comfortable with that. We felt we might lose them, they could get lost in that tier-one. So we created a new tier, Sharon, it's 1.5, and that's where those students were. And we kept eyes on them, we continued to benchmark them throughout the year so we wouldn't lose them, we didn't want them to fall through the cracks. So finally, the last step was really merging the data team process with MTSS. We looked at pre-data, pre-assessment data and teachers' plan, they created intervention groups for students based on that data, and then they began their intervention process. Personally, during that first semester, I immersed myself in their work, I went into grade levels, worked with students, there's eight teachers and just worked with those eight teachers in their classrooms during that time. You can see some of the groups here. The picture on the left on the bottom is part of their data team meetings, some of the data on top, but also just some of the activities students are, they were very engaged, they loved it, I loved it. It was so rewarding to be in there, in the trenches with teachers and just working with students. Sometimes that, we lose that as administrators, being able to go in and teach. That's missing. But it was, it's hard to define the time, but it was very rewarding. Additionally, I think by doing that, it sent a message to teachers that we valued their work. It sent a message to them and the students that we were vested in what they were doing. So is it working? Time will tell, but right now, we're encouraged. The number of students on tier-two has been significantly reduced. And that's not talking about the students who didn't meet criteria, that's talking about students who were on, interventions were successful for them, and they were able to move down to 1.5, sometimes down to 1. The number of students being monitored on FastBridge has been reduced. I had one month where fourth grade, I had no one being monitored with math computation. And in seven years at Sharon, I've never had that. So that was very encouraging. Consistently, our students were in the average range for skills, 25th to 75th percentile. So that's all good news. In February, they took interim assessment. And fourth grade really devoted their time this year on math interventions and we saw that reflected in their interim scores. They had, for the first time, the lowest amount in that intervention band, is 7.1%. And that's considering that that assessment does not, not all the standards had even been taught yet that were on the assessment because it was February timeframe. So very encouraged by that. And then in talking with students, they loved it. They expressed positive comments, they loved being able to move, they loved being able to meet with other teachers. That was one of the best things they said. I had one boy share with me that all he needed was a little more practice and then he got it. And that allowed him that. Now, I know I'm talking about struggling students, but this is also for high-achieving and gifted. It's an opportunity for them to be enriched, challenged, and it's been really beneficial for them. It hasn't been smooth, I'm not going to lie. Lot of pushback initially, but I think once they got used to it, teachers became more comfortable with it. It's a struggle for them to give up ownership of their students, but sharing ownership is critical for it to be successful. And that's the culture we want. We all own our students, not just the homeroom teacher. I even had a gifted, a fifth-grade gifted teacher who only teaches gifted and high-achieving students in ELA, and she had the opportunity to work with struggling writers. Those students would never have experienced her, or she them, in the model without that. And she loved it. She said it was energizing, that it was the most rewarding thing to work with those kiddos because she saw the impact she had almost immediately.
Can I ask a question? Could that go the other way around? Could teachers, different teachers, see how another teacher was teaching their child how to do something in just a different way?
All you need, that's why they get that opportunity to visit with other teachers for that time. And it's never consistent, the same teacher. They might go back to post-assessment data and regroup and they might see a different teacher, depending upon where they are with proficiency. But depending upon the unit of study too, that they're working with, whatever they're using interventions for, teachers switch it up. They're not always with the struggling students, they're not always with the high-achieving students, because that's, it's good for them too.
Right.
So moving forward, what are we going to do? Well, they're going to continue to monitor the effectiveness of it. We're going to look at our practices, we're going to look at milestone scores, they're coming in now, CCRPI, progress monitoring, and ongoing classroom performance. How are those students doing and day-to-day? But we're also going to add in additional social-emotional interventions. We have that with seven mindsets. We have it with our counselor, with small groups of students. And it's been, seven mindsets has been a wonderful motivation for our kids. But this year, we also took it a little further and we challenged every staff member in our building to identify a student and forge a relationship with them as well. And that has been life-changing for the students and for the teachers. Admin, we all have someone, that's one or two, and it's just been a great practice to spend time one-on-one and mentor those students. Having an adult that they can relate to outside of their teacher is really, really impactful. We'll continue to reflect, to revise and adapt. That's ongoing, that doesn't stop. If you stop doing those, you don't grow. But I think it really is our belief that achievement, student growth, social-emotional well-being of our students is going to be positively impacted, but I think it goes further than just elementary school. I think what we're doing now, we're going to, our students, our middle schools and high schools, will reap the benefits of those interventions. Sorry.
It's catching, isn't it? How has the reception been with the parents? I would think all positive.
Parents very much like students. They really, we have heard lots of conversation because their students go home and talk about these other teachers that aren't their teacher. They talk about the different things they're doing in other classrooms and they love it. And when we go into grade level discussions to talk about our students, what are you doing? Everybody can talk about them, because everybody has had, more than one teacher has had hands on them.
Do the students realize that they are getting this extra help? I mean, it seems like you're, but by targeting all-
They are strong, that might realize it.
By targeting all the students, just not-
Exactly. Everyone knows, they go somewhere, they're not, I don't think they're aware of, you know, where they're going. And there have been times when we have a gifted, identified gifted student who is maybe gifted in language arts, maybe needs some math help.
You know, with that 1.5, you know, sometimes I'll hear from parents, for a year their kid is struggling in, say, ELA or whatever, and they get that help. And then once they reach a certain level and they're okay, then they kind of lose that help and they feel, the parents feel the next year they might slide down.
Right.
So the 1.5 could kind of help-
It's a net.
Yeah, it's like a net, keeps them going, something like that.
You build a community and that's just wonderful because when you look at these kids, they'll be able to advocate, the older they get, more for their education and it becomes personalized, which is what we want. This is great.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, great report.
Thanks, Jenny.
Okay, Mr. Keith Sargent will, from South High, will make his presentation.
Hopefully, I'll have the same luck. Not lucky so far.
Good.
There we go. On behalf of South Forsyth High School, our principal, Laura Wilson, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to discuss a little bit about our freshman cohort program at South with you today. But before I discuss the what, I'd like to discuss a little bit of the why. And when I think of South Forsyth High School, I think of many good things. I think of our 97% graduation rate, our 97 out of 100 CCRPI score, our AP, IB, and CTAE programs, as well as our ACT and SAT scores. But as Jim Collins, the author of Good to Great, said in his book, "The enemy of great is good." And while we certainly celebrate something like a 97% graduation rate in those students who walk across that stage, oftentimes, we as administrators are left with asking, what about the 3% who didn't graduate? And that's kind of where the idea of this ninth-grade cohort or freshman cohort program came from, is we wanted to know if there was some type of way that we could identify and target students prior to their entering our school building as freshmen and be able to change that student's trajectory. So we quite simply began looking at our student data. And particularly, we began looking at our grade distribution, or the percentages of As's, Bs', Cs', and Fs.'s across our student body for the last three school years. Now, to be clear, this is not this current school year, this is the last three school years with the end of the 2016, 2017 school year. But just like our gradu-, excuse me, just like our graduation rate, 97% of our students were successful while 3% of our students weren't successful. And this data didn't really show us who these students were. So we started to look at this information by student subgroups. And this next chart is not inclusive of all of our student subgroups at South Forsyth High School, but I would like to draw your attention to the first subgroup, which is SWD, or Students with Disabilities. If you ask a teacher at South Forsyth High School who they think struggles the most academically, they're more than likely to answer, it's our students with disabilities, but our data does not indicate that. If you look at our students who are placed, our students who are homeless, and our students who are economically disadvantaged, you start to see a larger discrepancy of student performance. And that's kind of the areas that we as an administrative team began to focus on. But before I discuss the methodology to this program, I certainly would like to reference the learning profile in that while I think all five domains kind of cover with this ninth-grade cohort program, I think the three areas that tend to align with it the most in the learning profile, or excuse me, are percent and continuous learning, exhibiting strong personal qualities, and interacting effectively. So what we did with this data, we use this data sort of like CCRPI, like indicators. We're not necessarily saying there was a correlation between the student subgroup and their performance in our school building as much as this is just what our data shows us. So we collaborated with feeder middle schools and kept this data in the back of our minds as we were having conversations with students. And again, we used it to help identify possible participants for this subgroup. To be clear, we excluded students from the conversation who were students with disabilities, students who had a 504, and students who were ESAL, because it already felt like those students had a solid system of supports in place already. And quite frankly, our data didn't necessarily support that. But we didn't just take a quantitative approach, we took a qualitative approach as well. And certainly, just because a student was targeted, didn't mean that they met those three criteria, or those three indicators. It could certainly, they didn't meet any of them. But we initially started with 55 students in this particular group that we were targeting. And for various reasons, that list dwindled down to roughly 22 students who we were targeting. And once we kind of had the students that we were targeting, we needed a solid framework to kind of operate within. So we turned to, in my opinion, who are some of the foremost experts in implementing an academy model, and that's the Southern Region Initiative, the Southern Region Educational Board, through high schools that work. And we adopted their framework, which again, we feel is kind of research-based and solid and proven. We adopted their framework and implemented it in the following ways. We wanted to identify first and foremost after the students, highly effective, highly relationship-oriented teachers. And we paired these at-risk students with these highly effective teachers in their core academic classes. And we paired them with all three, excuse me, we paired them with their science, their language arts, and their math teacher. We weren't able to do so with social studies because of the way the schedule worked out. We had some students who were in world geography, some students in world history. But we also placed these at-risk students in what we call a high school transition course. And the high school transition course is simply a course that focuses on the social-emotional aspect with our students. These students also, their high school transition teacher, Mr. Hall, was also their habitudes teacher, which is a school-wide initiative for us. So we're really heavily focusing on the social-emotional aspect with these students, but ultimately, we wanted to see if we could somehow pilot a ninth-grade academy to be able to implement school-wide. And we're planning on doing so at the start of the 1920 school year. We certainly have goals with any sort of initiative, and three goals that we have, again, we adopted from the Southern Region Educational Board. And we established that all the participants will pass a core academic class and that participants will establish a connection with an adult who will assist and support them through the high school. And I call this a caring adult in the building or a cabinet. And for the most part, at least with this particular group of freshmen who we're targeting, it tended to be the students' core academic teachers. And you're going to hear from the teachers in just a second. And then the participants will declare some type of goal beyond high school that they can achieve and visualize and achieve. Of course, we followed some, we followed a continuous improvement model. We met as a small learning community with, I say we, myself and the three core academic teachers met weekly for about 45 minutes to an hour and they shared the same common planning period. And we made, we made data-driven decisions in these kid talks. We talked about students' academics, we talked about students' attendance, and we talked about their discipline. And sometimes we would talk about one student, sometimes we would be able to talk about all the students that we were targeting. And we also included wraparound services as needed, such as school counselors and school social workers. As with any, any change or any program, I think John Maxwell said it best when he said it's a process, it's not an event, and certainly is the case with this freshman cohort program. But we did have some short-term victories or short-term goals that we accomplished with this group. And then we saw a 53% reduction in the number of discipline referrals from their eighth-grade year to their ninth-grade year. We also saw a 28% reduction in the number of unexcused absences to school. And then at current time, 86% of our students who we are in this program are on track to be sophomores. And then the next step for us, and Jenny and I were talking just before this presentation, it's kind of interesting what she's doing at the elementary level, but we need to move the conversation vertically. We need to talk to, be talking to our middle schools and even our elementary schools about what the high school is doing as far as interventions and the successes that we had, as well as the failures. We're going to continue to monitor students into their 10th-grade year. And one of the most interesting aspects of this program, as I mentioned this very early on, is that we felt like we had some of the best teachers in that classroom as far as building relationships with students. And their request was that they would have more training as far as the social-emotional piece with students. So as we attempt to roll out the academy model in the 1920 school year with our freshmen, we're looking at social-emotional learning training with our staff and professional development along those lines. And then for us too, we want to connect better with our community. There's lots of opportunities we felt like we could have had with our partners in education and then also connecting with the parents of these students as well. We felt we could have done a better job with that. And then for us, finally, the next step is developing some type of at-risk committee. And not that it's a silo effect for us at South, but we have a lot of teachers who are interested in impacting students. We have a teacher, her name is Leah McGray, who is impacting seventh-grade students at Lakeside Middle School and she calls it SOFO girls. And she's specifically targeting at-risk students at Lakeside Middle School who are seventh graders. But I'm going to close out this presentation with a video from the teachers who actually participated and certainly welcome any questions that you have at the conclusion of this video. And hopefully, it'll play.
I just think that the students just became more comfortable. They were comfortable with us. I think building their relationships is really important. You know, whatever's happening at home or whatever their reason is for being possibly identified, they need this support, whether it's not coming from home, they get it from us. And there's just that comfort level. They come to us for questions and they come for us with help for anything. It's just nice to see.
Well, I think because of how comfortable they were, they were allowed, like it allowed us to have a better support system for all of them. Because you would call them in for, while you had them for math support, finish your period, you could work on the language arts or biology. Or you would call us and say, hey, what's going on with such and such? What do they need to turn in? We could always email each other and say, hey, someone's having a rough day today, keep an eye out for them. So having that support system was good for them as well.
Right. And I think that support system enables them to just feel more comfortable in the school setting. You know, we've got this big, huge school and we kind of have been able to make school small for them. So that they can feel more part of it and we're kind of helped to hold that camera and we're sharing with each other, which helps their comfort level, I think.
Definitely. The lines of communication are certainly important.
I think it helped us, when we had classes of 35 kids and we had these students that were really being intentional about, it helps us focus on them more as individuals and see them as individuals instead of seeing them as classes as whole.
And I think knowing the background information, they need more conscious of just, these are more than just our students, these are kids in the classrooms. They have feelings, they have other stuff that is going on, they're adolescents, they're just going through so much. And I think having this extra support and us communicating just gave them a sense of belonging. And it just made, it made me a better teacher and made me think of things that I hadn't in a while, just as a professional.
Yeah, and you see what their individual needs are and then you can respond to their individual needs a little more intentionally again than you could, you're looking at a masked group of kids.
I think huge is the connection piece. I would really like to see it go down and have these kids being identified sooner. You know, adolescents and just the development of students at this age. At, you know, freshman, it's happening and obviously, it's high school. But in the middle school, if they can be identified and we can keep that communication between the middle and high school, you know, within the county, I think that the transition will be better. They get these services earlier and, you know, just make them better students and make them know that they're being supported with their teachers throughout.
Right. I think identifying positively, rewarding that positive behavior piece, just because these are the kids who are constantly called in for negative behavior, but what would that do to their connection with Mr. Sargent or another administrator if they were called in for doing something good? And just having something positive pointed out to them.
I would say from a practical standpoint, it would be good to maybe hand-schedule these kids. We've kind of found this year that- We've kind of found this year that having a core class at the end of the day for all these kids was tough for them, because by seventh period, they are...
They're done.
And if they had an elective seventh period, that might be better, so if you get them a little fresher in the day, the beginning of the day, that would be more productive for them.
The things that we're trying to do with the positive intervention, and the vertical teams we have in schools, I think, are powerful. And you're so right, it does need to start earlier than high school. You're going, and so many of those patterns are already set, and trying to change the mold. So what do they do for the sophomore year? Are you having teachers that will follow them?
We're following the same process. We're identifying that highly effective, highly relationship-oriented teacher, and we're going to, the goal eventually is obviously to track them all the way to.
That's great. Anybody else have any comments?
No, it's just a good program.
Great program.
I'd just make a comment about both of the presentations. Sharon Elementary and South Forsyth High School are two of the highest achieving schools in the entire state of Georgia, and it's just so wonderful to listen to both of you talk about how your schools are not content with the status quo, you're looking on what you can do to improve, and, you know, one of the themes throughout both presentations was kids having a sense of purpose and belonging, and, you know, you mentioned relationships several times in your piece, Keith, and I know Jenny did as well, and that's the key to all of it, but it's just, you know, it's one of the things that really, I think, separates our school system, is it would be really easy for schools like these to kind of just sit back and, because their kids are performing at a very high level, but they don't do that. They look at what they can do to move that even further still, and they should be commended for that.
When you made your point, when you were talking about your progress points, and you were at 102.8 out of a score of 100 the year before, and you were frustrated you didn't have a greater progress points. When you're here, there is still room for growth, but that's not a bad thing to be frustrated with. 27 is good.
That's a great point, Kristen, and that's something, there's always room for growth. There's always room for growth.
It's harder to have a big, 36 points out of 40, I mean.
What I love about what's happening at South Cohort, and that kind of stuff is giving stability to kids that may not have that at home, that they know that they have a family at school that's behind them, that's huge.
This is a lot of things that we learned at academies and that.
Yes, it is, reminding me of that.
You know, they had meetings and talked about the kids, and he's had a bad day, what's going on with him.
But you made a point about smaller school, when you have that large of a school, it meant it's small for those kids.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you all for sharing, they were excellent, we appreciate that very much, and for what you do every day in the schools, it's appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll have the initial budget presentation, and Dr. Bearden wants to have some comments.
Yeah, before Rick comes up and presents, just a couple of comments about the FY19 proposed budget. The proposed budget represents a 9.47% increase in spending over the current fiscal year. The vast majority of the increase is attributed to three areas: the opening of new schools, continued student growth, and required increases in our share of the teacher retirement system. Just as a point of reference, the current budget was an 8.1% increase over FY17. 96.1% of the proposed increase in spending is on personnel. I know that doesn't surprise the school board, we are people business. Only 3.9% of the proposed increase is on operations. In total, 89.2% of the overall proposed budget is for salaries and benefits, the remaining 10.8 on operations, and that's been consistent in Forsyth County schools for many years.
Still higher.
Yes. There are 212 new school-based positions proposed in the FY19 budget, 212. Again, we're opening two new schools. There are 21 non-school-based positions proposed in this budget. 73% of this budget is for instruction. I say this every year, but it needs to be said, the national standard, 65%, to be 8% over that is statistically very significant, and it shows the board's commitment to spending the vast majority of dollars in the classroom. The total increase for personnel is $36,911,000. 50.7% of this increase is for the new positions that I mentioned, growth and new schools. 26.3% of the increase is on the teacher retirement system, which is very significant. 23% for an increase in salaries for our employees. The proposed budget does include funds for step increase. Tentatively, the proposed budget includes a 1% cost-of-living adjustment for all employees. You just want to be really clear, this is contingent upon projected revenue being enough to cover the cost, a 1% COA would cost us $3.3 million. We certainly can't commit to that today, we have to wait until the revenue comes in. If we have enough revenue to have a balanced budget and do that, I will propose it. If not, then I will not be able to propose it, because we have to have a balanced budget. If we do give a 1% COA, that will mean that over the last four years, we will have given at minimum 8% to every employee in Forsyth County schools. I think that's very significant for those employees who have gone up a step, they've received more than 8% over those four years, and that's really important as we continue to try to recruit and retain the best possible talent in our region. Even with those increases, we're able to maintain a very healthy fund balance. We know how important that is in terms of our bond rating and for future bonds down the road. Budget includes personnel funds necessary to meet all the recommendations from our safety task force, which I'm proud of. I would be remiss if I didn't say again, I want to thank our governor and our legislature for fully funding QBE for the first time in 15 years. This increase in revenue allowed us to meet many of the needs in our system. I want to thank all of our department heads, many of them are here today, for their conscientious work on putting together budgets that meet the needs of their department, but are also fiscally responsible, and I also want to thank our principals for their work. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, this is Rick's last budget presentation for Forsyth County schools. We were laughing earlier today, he found one from 1994, '95, and our total spending back then was $37 million versus $440 million now, so we have grown a lot over the years. But Rick, once again, has done a tremendous job with this budget, as he always does, and although it was his last one, he certainly has put as much time and energy into this one as he ever has before. And so with that, I want to turn it over to Mr. Gunn.
Good afternoon. Budget presentation pulled up here. Each of you has a budget book. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint presentation, but I wanted to explain to you about your book. There's a summary tab, and behind that summary are some basic informational pages. Then there's a revenue tab, which of course would be all of our revenue, all the detail that backs this up. And then each functional area, there'll be a summary page for each function that's going to show you a line item budget, and then it's going to have the detail of the operations behind that for every section. So anything you could possibly want to know is in here, in great detail. But I'll turn it over to the PowerPoint now. Earlier, we had a budget hearing, that was one of our first of two that we have to have. The next one will be next week, and that gives the public a chance to come in and talk about the budget that we're presenting. Dr. Bearden talked about some of these points. Basically, for next year, we're adding 1,737 students, 3.5% increase, and that's 49,540. And our QBE count, FTE QBE account that comes off of our allotment sheet since 2010, we've grown 15,294 students, or 46.9%. As Dr. Bearden says, there's no austerity cut in this, that saved us about $4.2 million over previous, what we had initially gotten with our preliminary allotment sheet. Over the 15 years, excuse me, 18 years, we have lost $166 million to the austerity cuts. Let's see. On TRS, rates are going to go from 16.1% to 20.9% for fiscal year 19. That's actually a 24.33% increase over the prior year. It's going to cost us $9.8 million more for the existing employees we have as of right now. So we get no more benefit from it as a system, as an employer, we're just having to spend more money on it.
Thank you for that detail you gave us about over the years.
Right, right. Over, since 2010, TRS rates have gone up 114%. And last year, they went up 17.8% as well. Budget, we're adding two new schools. I have a page in here, we'll talk about the new staff that's being added, but that was $3.7 million. Overall, the revenues are growing, they're keeping pace with the growth that we have, which is nice, that's always good. And again, we maintain our $5 efficiency rating with the state of Georgia for the third year, the only metro system to do so. This is our general fund overview, it's broken up by revenues, expenditures, then has a fund balance analysis at the bottom. As you can see, we're budgeting a deficit of $669,000 for fiscal year 19. As Dr. Bearden alluded to, this is preliminary, once we get the final digest numbers, this number will change. It could go up, it could go down, and based on that is what we'll make the decision on the 1% raise for.
I asked this question earlier, when do we think the final, final, final one will happen?
Usually, it's an hour before we do the last. No, usually, it's around the 15th of June, we'll get the final one. I've already gotten three versions so far, and Mary was actually very quick sending out, Mary Patrick sending out the first one this year, so I commend her on that, but I've gotten three versions of it. I've overstated my exemptions, I'll talk about that when we get to the revenue side, to account for hopefully what's still to come, but has not been booked yet as far as exemptions. So this number could stay where it is, or it could swing the other direction, depending on what the final numbers are.
But again, the final budget will not be red, it'll be, balanced or in the black, one of the two, it's not going to be red.
Right. Overall, the budget for fiscal year 19 will go up $38.4 million. Down at the bottom, there's a fund balance analysis. You can see, we began this current fiscal year with $61,440,000, and the revenues that we should be putting back over expenditures, $741,000, which we're estimating our fund balance to be almost $62 million at the end of this year. You can see the budgeted shortfall there, and the ending fund balance of $61.1 million, which equates to 13.77% of our overall budget. The magic number that the state says is 15%, you're not supposed to exceed 15%. The rating houses like to see you having a robust fund balance, 13.77% is very robust fund balance. A lot of systems don't have that.
So just to be clear with Jeff saying, we will not take out of reserves to balance, we're just waiting, we just don't know the final.
Correct, and this is the initial version of the budget. There'll be some changes between now and next week, when you do tentative approval, and there can still be some changes between next week and final approval. This page is expenditures by function. This can show you the change from the previous year. Instruction, you can see it went up 9.54%, and you can read down the page of all the different changes. Under improvement of instruction, you see 39.1%. It was a small number to begin with, and it went up $2.7 million. Well, six, excuse me, there's six new positions that are in the safety department, as well as in the curriculum department, one in safety, five in curriculum. So that accounts for a good portion of it. And there's $1.3 million for SRO officers. That's actually budgeted in this functional area as well.
Say that second part again.
The SROs that we have, we're going to be adding more based on what the safety task force had, that's an additional $1.3 million. That would be in that area. So that's why you see that 39% change. As Dr. Bearden said, I want to thank the departments, because they all came to the table with a, not a lot of want, they came to us with what they actually needed. So that made my job a lot easier this year. Salaries to benefits, excuse me, salaries and benefits, 8, 9% of the budget while operating was almost 11%, and you can see the change from the prior year. We'll always be labor-intensive, because that's where we are, it's all staff. This shows you expenditure comparison, this gives you a good graphical vision of what you see here, 73.41 is in instruction where it should be. I was looking for business services, I think we're, I can't even see our slip.
Not in the chart.
Very small. Salary compared to operations, again, the bulk of our budget is salaries and benefits, $396 million. These are the salary and benefit increases, and you can see a list of all the positions that were added. The cost of these positions is salary plus benefits. As you go down the page, there's 212 new ones at the schools, 21 are in non-school-based positions. So total school positions, $17,256,000. Non-school-based, $1,440,000, and the total positions, $18.7 million, 233. Other adds to the budget, a step increase cost us a little over $5 million. The cost of living increase of 1% is 3.4, and again, that's tentative based on the final digest. The TRS increase for current employees is 9.8, and we increased the doctorate stop-in by $41,000 overall. So the total positions and TRS increases cost us almost $37 million for next year. This page shows what it costs to open two schools. These are non-teaching positions, these are what I call the base positions to get a school open, principals, APs, counselors, ITs', nurses, custodians. So you can see the total cost for both schools to open is $3.7 million. And again, when, back in 2017, when we closed that year, when we did that budget, we were budgeting $4 million to go back into fund balance to help us with this cost. So it was a good thing we actually put seven back ends.
Because the teachers, a lot of them will be shifting, so it's not like a lot of new teachers.
Yeah, the number of teachers wouldn't change, because our ratio hasn't changed. We would have created the same number of teachers regardless if we were opening the two new schools or not. It's the school-based positions that you have to have when you open a new building, where you have the increase.
And the growth is pretty much across the whole system.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
But our ratio hasn't changed since...
Years. It hasn't changed since I've been here. It's been, since 2012, Cindy, does that sound about right? Six or seven years, anyway, yeah?
Well, the cost of a teacher today, we use a vacancy, we budget 89, excuse me, $89,368 per teacher, and that's a T5 with 11 years' experience is what our average is in the system. And that number also includes the state health, the TRS, the FICA, the Medicare. State health costs us almost $12,000 a year per employee.
Just for health.
Just for health insurance.
That has really gone up to when...
It's crazy. It really has, I mean, it's a...
These were in the low 70s when Cindy was here, wow.
So between health and, just health and TRS alone for the average teacher?
Oh, it's probably, well, we're spending about 50% in benefits on our teachers now.
Up to 50?
Yeah. And I have a sheet that breaks down every position by what, for the cost, I just don't have it in this budget presentation. But the percentage of benefits keeps going up every year.
So that's the main thing.
That's the main thing, that's what's killing everybody, it's just the cost, right. This is our revenue summary. Basically, you know we operate off of two things, local revenue, state and federal revenue. Advailant taxes being our main source of local revenue. If you look down at the bottom of the page, near the bottom, there's a calculation for the tax revenue projection for 2019. This is pulled straight off of the digest that we have. I bumped up the exemptions a little bit, because I don't think we've got the final number of exemptions in, and if they come in less than what I've got here, of course, the budget deficit that I showed will swing the other direction. The current mileage rate, 17.3, you can see the gross revenue, $197 million, and then the commission is almost $5 million for next year that we would...
Which is almost half a million dollars more than last year, a good $400,000.
Yes, ma'am. So the tax revenues have gone up 8.7% over the prior year. QBE being our other major revenue, we're looking at $221 million, almost $221 million on the basic allotment sheet, and $6.9 million for the midterm adjustment. This year, we receive $6.8 in midterm.
Wow, okay.
So that went up 9.92. So overall, total revenues were up $36,992,000, a 9.11% increase over the prior year. So revenues are keeping pace with the expenditures. And as we talked about, the shortfall of $700,000, that's around the numbers, I think it's 15% of 1%. that's around the numbers, I think it's fifteen percent of one percent of our budget. So that's how small that is, I know it sounds like a big number, but one percent of our budget is four million four hundred thousand dollars. Now, this is our revenue comparison, state and federal versus local. The only federal money that we have in here is we get a little bit of indirect costs from Title I program, and then we get some flood control funds. But between the two of them, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I was shocked, I knew it was low, but that's.
In the general fund. Now, you, of course, you have Title I, which is federal, six B, as a good over to school food, you see they have some federal money there. But the general fund gets basically no federal funds at all, so.
So I had a question today on the, for free and reduced lunches, where does that funds come from?
The free and reduced?
For the reduced price? Or is it, we just balance it and over?
Well, basically, we're, we're getting the money to pay for the meals. We, we have, and I can, when I get to the school food, I can talk about the different revenues there. But I'm not sure how she determines the meal rates. I know she's having to raise the rate last year, and I meant to put that in here, but I didn't have that slide to put in. But I will get that to you. This is our mileage rate history since two thousand, as you can see, it's been the same for the last five years. Cost for FTE, we're still the lowest in the metro area. As you can see, everybody lined up under there what their costs are. Let's see. City of Atlanta, I don't have City of Atlanta on here, theirs is about fifteen thousand dollars.
It's higher.
Just a little higher. And we were around seventy-three hundred last year, the reason for the increase, again, was TRS. Everybody on this sheet went up basically a thousand dollars, between nine hundred and a thousand dollars for TRS costs. School food services, this is Bauer Bauer's budget. And as you can see, we're looking at a one point nine million dollar deficit for fiscal year nineteen. For fiscal year eighteen, we had a one point three million dollar budgeted deficit. She's not gonna be at that number, it's gonna be a lot less than that.
And that really has changed because of the, the benefits again?
Right, the benefits, and, you know, we have to provide benefits for, for our employee. So you can do the math when you're paying somebody twelve thousand dollars a year, and their health insurance is twelve thousand dollars a year.
Go back to that previous slide for a second, I just wanna, I wanna make a point, I just think it's important. If we were just to spend up to what Gwinnett County does, three hundred dollars per pupil.
More.
That would be fourteen million dollars you would have to add to this budget. Three hundred times the number of students we have, just to put that in some perspective, yes. Just to get to be at the same level as Gwinnett. And obviously, to get to, you know, some of the other ones to cap our full, there would be many millions more than that. I just wanted to put that in some perspective.
We actually couldn't, we would tap out before we could.
We would tap out.
We legally couldn't do that.
That's correct. Yeah, for fun, I, I plugged those numbers in, and City of Atlanta was like, you know, spending four hundred something million dollars more to spend the same thing.
I don't think people realized, yeah. And I don't think they realized that we have a twenty mil cap.
Right.
So, as Kristen said, we really couldn't do what they do.
Right, we're at seventeen point three now. Sorry, no, that's, that's fine, no.
I think you should go back one more screen where we haven't changed the milit rate for five.
That's five and a half.
And as I get asked a lot, we do have two here, two milit rates, one for maintenance and operation, one for the bonds.
Considering how fast we've grown, that's just remarkable.
Well, it's kept pace with our run, which is, which is great. Back to school food, she's not gonna have the deficit that we're showing there of one point three million for last year. She budgeted that based on what we had at the time. I think her revenues have come in more than what she had budgeted for, and she's also taken in, spent less, excuse me.
Do you have a guess, or?
Right, and we, eventually, we are gonna have to start helping out the program, it's been fifteen years since we had helped them out. But it's coming, just because of the cost of the insurance.
I mean, they've done a remarkable job, when you think about it.
She has. Her total budget's gone up almost two million dollars, and you can see the benefits went up five hundred thousand dollars. While the salaries only went up two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and that's adding two new schools. So that's what the benefits are doing to us. So she's projected to have a three point seven million at the end of eighteen. But, but again, her numbers probably may come in lower. We were anticipating having to help her this year, starting around April, May, and we haven't had to. So I don't foresee us having to help her out this year. She has federal guidelines that she has to maintain her fund balance at a certain level, and when that, when it gets to that point, that's when we'll have to start helping her out.
I really appreciate all of the cafeterias working to increase the number of kids that eat. They certainly have made an effort.
So is the local revenues here is really what's being paid by the students?
The local is, is the meals, yep. You can see state, we get a whole three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the school food program. And federal, six point seven.
And that's because of mostly a lot of Title I, or any, any, so there's a random matter, does it?
Yeah, there's just no state funding for it. Very little, I should say.
Thank you, that was my question, somebody asked me.
The, the last slide I have for you is debt service. And this is just basically our mortgage payments, nothing's changed. It's just best budgeting the revenue versus the anticipated payouts that are on our debt service schedules. So you can see the fund balance there would, would go up twenty million next year. Of course, if the bonds pass, then this would be a bridge to, to show those new payments, so it wouldn't do that, it wouldn't go up that much. Of course, if it doesn't pass, then we'd have to revisit the debt service mileage rate. And I know I went over a lot of stuff really fast, I mean, it's a, there's, there's a lot of detail in the book. Overall, what we have added here, as far as, let me get back to this slide. As far as a step increase, the cost of living, paying for the TRS, adding the positions at the schools that were needed because of the safety audit, six of those being school advocacy specialists, and another six counselors. And then one point three million for the additional SROs that we're gonna be at, that are gonna be added during the year. And a one percent, I think this is, you know, to, to be where we're at right now is pretty good. I've, I've been, I've been doing these budgets for a long time, and there's times when we sat down the first time and we were twelve million out.
I can remember some of that.
And that's the revenues we're not keeping up with.
No, we're not.
So, but, well, next week, we'll have another budget hearing before the regular meeting, and then that would be tentative approval. So, of course, all of this is subject to change, if I get a digest change, I'll adjust everything for that. And then the mileage hearings, that, those wouldn't take place until after we got the final digest, and we talked earlier about those dates for those meetings.
So it's kinda taken us years to recoup from the downturn. We had five years of furloughs, we had, what, three, five years of no step, no percent. And it's just, the economy did kick in, but it's taken us a while to kind of, we cut and cut, cut, while we were still growing in population, which is.
And also, we didn't add the support and stuff that we needed to add.
No.
So we finally, it's been progressive though.
We were adding zero positions centrally, not intentionally.
And we gained ten thousand students easily over that time, so we're finally have started to rebuild what we should have had before, but didn't.
And even while the economy's better, it's still not stable, as we would consider, so. Things like fuel cost with the actions of today, our capital expenditures, which not a part of this right now, you know, those things are gonna go up with the tariffs and other things coming along, so there's other things that are gonna cost more. And we have to kinda be ready and prepared to watch for those, those variables change. In our environment, it'll cost us more than other areas we didn't foresee, 'cause some of this we can't foresee.
That's sustainability.
It's simple as a tweet sometimes, right?
Yep.
Which is scary, which is scary.
As you go through your budget books, obviously, if you have any questions or comments, call or email either one of us, we'll make sure that you have everything you need before we ask you to adopt tentatively, so.
Mr. Gunn, you guys are both, Mr. Gunn, you've answered a lot of questions, so it's really appreciated.
That's one.
Thank you. Next on the presentation agenda, exchange student policy and guidelines, it's Debbie Smith.
Good evening, everybody. Well, for about three years now, our counselors and our principals have been asking about foreign exchange students. And so we thought now with Denmark opening and the Alliance Academy opening, and we have a little more room in our schools, Dr. Burden and I had this discussion last year, that it would be a good time to go revisit our policy and update that, so that we can begin that process. So I went to the expert, me, Shaella, and she and I have been working together, and she's done an outstanding job in looking at it, so I'll let you talk about that in a little bit.
So what we did in order to really look at the existing board policy that we have, is we looked at that, but then we also compared it to the policies that are in place for other counties. So we looked at APS, Cobb, Fulton, Parting, and Rockdale, those were the ones that really had their board policies published on the website. And then we came up with a version, and then we asked principals to take a look at that and really give input, because they are the ones that will be receiving those exchange students right there. We think that international exchange very much aligns with our learner profile. We want our students to learn about other cultures, we want them to engage in authentic cultural experiences, we want them to learn how to interact effectively with people from all around the world, and we want them to make and build relationships even on an international level. So that aligns perfectly with our learner profile, profile right there. So one of the things that we are proposing to change is to make sure that we have really a very well-rounded exchange program that benefits our students, but then also the students that come over here and are our guests. We want them to be part of an exchange organization, and that exchange organization we propose should be evaluated and certified by the Council on Standards for International Educational Travel. That is an organization that really looks at the policies of those exchange organizations and makes sure that they are up to par, and that they meet certain standards that that organization has come up with. We want those students that come over here to be very well taken care of, not that they have representatives in our state and close by that can take care of students, especially if there's a problem maybe with a host family, we want to make sure that they have their English language skills tested, so that they are able to follow what is going on in the classroom. We want to make sure that they have all the insurance coverage that they really need, so that they are protected, as, you know, as we have them here as a guest. We also suggest that we really take a look at all of those information and biographical information, make sure that we place them in the correct grade level, and give them courses that they can really benefit from while they are here. We wanted to also make sure that we have a timeline established for applying students, so that they're aware of when, by when do they have to apply, and when will they have an answer whether they can be placed or not at our different high schools. We want to make sure that it is clear to them that they are not being able to graduate from a high school here, and that they cannot have graduated from their high school already in their home country. But if they are placed in twelfth grade, we would like to leave it up to the discretion of the principals to make sure that they could walk at graduation or without really earning a diploma. We also really wanted to make sure that we clarify any kind of legal documentation that is required, so any visa requirements. And by restricting it to J visas, we're really limiting the time that they can be here, and we're making sure that all of the state department's guidelines are followed. So that was one of the changes that we proposed. And then also that there is no out-of-district request, you know, those students would have to reside with a family, and they have to attend the high school in their attendance, so.
What is the J visa, is it for one year or two?
It is usually for one year, yeah. So an F one would be actually, they would be eligible for more than one year until they've completed their studies. But since this is really one exchange year, we thought that would be the best fit.
And so then, did they go back and they get the credit that they got here, it applies to their home, wherever they're from?
And each country in high school deals with that differently, so they will have to make that decision, those schools have to make that decision what credits, just like we evaluate the credits that they earn maybe abroad over here. We also want to absolutely make sure that they have to follow all the rules and regulations that are set forth with all of our different organizations. And we want to make sure that the host families are aware that they are responsible, especially for visa requirements and any legal documentation. So for example, if a student were to leave early during the year, there's notification requirements to the state department, and we want to make sure that they are aware of that, and they have to follow that. And then the last item that we propose as a change is, we wanna make sure that they are present here and that they don't arrive, you know, a lot later than what we expected. We wanna make, make sure that they have that full experience while they are here. So thank you for letting us propose those changes, and we're looking forward to your feedback.
Yeah, and if you're okay with this, we'll sit on the table, and then we'd vote on it following month. This is new, we, we've kinda put this on the back burner until we had Denmark built, and so that's why we brought it up now.
Have you had many requir, a lot? Is this what the Rotary Club used to do, and sponsor, they used to sponsor a student?
No, that's, that is usually college.
College.
But it's, it's very typical, and I know teaching people are gonna get phone calls, but in my office, we get four or five requests a week.
Really?
So where do the requests come from?
They come from, there are companies, foreign exchange companies that make this happen for, and they find the host families, and people contact them if they wanna come over, so that's why the organization that she's talking about, they have to be approved through. So that we make sure that everything is the way that it should be.
Now, if the high schools overcrowded, are they, do they get any priority, or? I mean, how does that work, 'cause most of our high schools will still be overcrowded, right?
How do we do this, we turn people away, live here, pay taxes?
Yeah, we've, we've left it up to the principal, but we've suggested a minimum of, or a maximum of two for each high school.
I think it's well thought out, but we've had our own people who've paid taxes for ten, twenty, thirty years, and we don't let their third kid go to that school, and now we're gonna let someone from a different country? I love the reciprocity, I think it was well thought out, 'cause it's great benefit for our kids, but what about the kids that are right here? I think this is great for the future, but we opened Denmark and Alliance, but that's, we're not, we're not there yet, I don't think. I can see in a year or two, but I, I just don't think this is fair to our taxpayers.
But I think we have to be careful too, with the bond coming up, God forbid, you know, if it does not pass, we will not have a new high school in the next three or four years, so the high schools, again, will be overcrowded, and we may have to do some, hey, do you even say the word redistricting, in the meantime, to, to make that work out. So I think maybe, I, I agree, maybe holding off just a little bit, timing is, you know.
I like the way you limited, like, the head of res, the rest, I can't say that word. And even like, they had to prove that they were already doing it ahead, and if not, they had a short period of time, two years, to kinda do it backwards, but.
But I do think there's some benefits to our students.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I mean, even when I was in school, I, I still talk to this guy that was in school in nineteen eighty, he, he, I still talk to him all the time on Facebook and that kinda thing, and he was an exchange student from Denmark. And so, you know, and just the things he does, it's so different even now, I do think that it is a beneficial program. I mean, I, I agree about overcrowding or whatever, but it, it, it does have its benefits besides just letting kids go here to school. It has benefits for us too, is what I'm saying.
That's why we talked about the maximum of two, two per high school, but certainly, if, if the majority of the board wants to just table this for another year and bring it back up, that, that's fine. I mean, this conversation has been going on with our high school principals, they, you know, now that we're opening a new school, they wanted us to bring it back up and revisit, because to your point, in being a former high school administrator, having exchange students in your school adds a lot to your school culture and climate, there's many benefits to that. But if you don't feel like the timing's right, and the majority of you feel that way, that's fine, we can absolutely just put it on the back burner, and we will revisit it.
We always think about it a little bit, you know.
Do you wanna think about it, and we'll talk about it next meeting?
I remember, we had a Denmark exchange student as well, but I just, I mean, we have kids that wanted to do IB or a hosta or whatever, and how do we, how do we look them in the eye and say, hmm, sorry?
Well, that's fine, just give it some thought, we'll think, again, no reason we're upset over that, we all understand where you're coming from there.
It did a lot of work, it really, you really did make sure it was equal, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, next on the presentations, it's an issue that I wanted to. Next on the presentations is an issue that I wanted to ask your opinion on. It's the GSBA proposed statement on health insurance. Do you remember that every board member has a representative that meets with the other? GSBA represents, GSBA boards at the legislative meeting, well, proposed legislation stands are looked at and voted on as what their representatives of GSBA will lobby for at the state capel in, in the next year. Most everything that was already in the proposal for the legislation, legislative positions did not change. There were some issues that were brought up that were voted out. The only one that was accepted was the GSBA opposes legislation that prohibits teachers who are directly employed by a high school from teaching dual enrollment courses for post-secondary partners. And this was brought up by Jones County, and they have seen the problems with that. So, that was accepted as a proposed position. The one that I would like for you to talk, discuss is one that they also brought up, and it says, "GSBA supports state funding for employers' cost of health insurance for non-certified personnel at the rate that is comparable to certified personnel." And the reasoning is that that additional cost is, is hurtful, especially for small districts that are in the rural areas of the state. I had some concerns there that it was a larger issue than just this, so in general agreement, they, we were tailoring it to possibly make a recommendation at the June meeting in Savannah. And the ginger wayly from Jones County and I were to work on a general statement. So, I sent this to Dr. Bearden and Rick Gunn to ask their opinion, because I wasn't sure that, I really didn't know what to think about this. It, absolutely, as your reference was, the cost in relation to the salaries that are paid to non-certified personnel is huge. But can you reiterate some of your concerns about that, Rick, about the, maybe the best thing to do would be to ask, have a position that asks the state to decrease the rate rather than singling out possibly raising the, their portion of the payment?
I'm trying to remember exactly what I told you. No. I'm pretty much raised.
Sorry.
You need to read it.
Let me read my comments.
It says, "In my opinion, rather than paying for insurance itself,"
I can't even mind.
"All right, the state would just drop the rates." That was basically...
Right. What I was saying was, rather than school systems actually having to come up with the money to pay it, just reduce the rate, was, it's the same effect.
Okay.
Why?
Across the board, or just...
Right, just reduce, just, you know, the overall rates are ridiculous for what they're doing, for what they're charging schools.
Okay.
It's, it's nuts.
Okay.
You know, we've had our independent brokers look at it, and, you know, it can't be done cheaper. You know, they're surprised at how much it actually, what they're actually charging.
Okay. So, that, that's the approach we should probably take.
Yeah, that was my idea, was rather than, you know, giving us more money, just reduce the rates.
All right, okay.
So, the staff that we have that aren't covered, you know, at all, we're, we're not having to pay that excess for, just reduce the rates across the board.
Is there information that you could get Evan to make that point?
Yes, yeah.
That would help her out?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that one's...
I'm sorry, Ashley, I'm trying to remember what I told you.
Well, you had given me an example to show how much a percentage of the health insurance that we pay in relation to salary.
Exactly.
And I had that example, but what you're saying makes a lot more sense than just trying to ask them to, and pay more of that, because as you say, they might take out of